In the spirit of respect, authenticity and reconciliation, the town of Slave Lake honors and acknowledges that we are situated on the traditional lands of Sawridge First Nation within Treaty Territory. Home to Indigenous, Métis and Inuit peoples who have occupied these lands since time immemorial. Councillor Granlick.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called question those in favor. And that is carried. We will move right along into reports and new business with our request for proposals for legal services and Roland, the floor is yours.
Perfect. All right. Good evening, your worship and members of council. I got a couple of reports here. Um, so the purpose of our first report, a request for proposals for legal services. Uh, it's just to provide counsel with information on the proposals, uh, received, outline our evaluation process and uh, show you how administration determined its final decision. Uh, just on the background here, uh, the last time we had done an RFP for legal services was in June of 2020. Uh, and we had only received three submissions and looking back at further RFPs, generally we receive between two and three. Proposals for the last couple of rounds. And so this round was actually quite exciting. Uh, the town received, uh, seven good responses. Um, which is a lot more than we, uh, normally have ever gotten. And all of the proposals that we did receive were actually quite, uh, quite lengthy. This took a little bit longer than we had originally anticipated. With each package between somewhere between 30 and 80 pages, uh, from each firm that we had to go over. Um, all proposals were distributed to an evaluation committee comprised of five town staff members. Who regularly access and utilize the legal services. Uh, the committee reviewed all of the submissions, provided their scoring feedback and recommendations. Uh, for the discussion there, we, uh, a copy of the RFP is included in the package. I'm not going to go over that. That just kind of gives you the submission criteria that we listed on the, the page there. Uh, the evaluation criteria, uh, so project team composition and qualifications were weighted at 20%. Relevant municipal experience, including local experience was weighted at 30%. Uh, the corporate profile references and value added services awaited at 20 and the proposed fee structure was weighted at 30%. Uh, so the actual process itself, each member of the five person review committee independently reviewed and scored their submissions. These were then combined and averaged to provide an overall rating. Uh, the committee subsequently met to discuss, uh, individual departmental needs, provide verbal and provide verbal feedback on each, uh, firm. And so all the information was compiled into the master scoring sheet, which is attached to this report. Um, so we just gave you the kind of the combined scores there, uh, from our, from our discussion there. Uh, for the fee structure evaluation, uh, we did a, we assessed it in two different ways. Uh, first, each firm's hourly rates for various positions, associates, aides, partners were compared and scored. Uh, second, uh, we provided a model based approach. So we took the rates and we applied them to three actual legal cases that we had previously undertaken. Um, we then, uh, provided an estimate of what those cases would have cost the town should we have used each of those firms. Um, and I believe that this dual approach allowed the review, review committee to evaluate not only the relative rates, but also provide real world financial implications of engaging each firm. Um, that one, it was a little bit nuanced. Uh, I think most of the firms, uh, depending on, you know, what you had to go for, there's a lot of variance in the rates depending on the associates. Um, but I believe this one came to the most fair and most realistic, uh, uh, result process. Uh, so for results and observations, uh, all submissions were detailed and provide a thorough review of the services that each, uh, firm provided. Um, this was a great exercise. Administration really liked undertaking this. This is the best one that I've been involved, uh, to date. Um, cause it really gave us a broader picture of the firms interested in providing legal services to the town. We got their portfolios. We got their names. We got their contacts. We got exactly what they did. Like we got the most in-depth, uh, piece of information that I think, uh, that we've ever gotten. Um, so that gave us a great opportunity to see exactly what was out there. Um, also, uh, with this, uh, with this information, um, you know, being able to actually see the rates and, and services and stuff, I think we'll be able to, uh, go forward even when we're negotiating with any legal firm to have a better approach to, you know, what kind of rates and services that we can actually negotiate with them too. Now that we have a, a big broader spectrum of exactly what's out there. Um, so for next steps, administration is satisfied with our current provider Brownlee, but we do see Valiant adjusting the town's approach to legal services. So unlike other, uh, professional service contract, legal services vary significantly depending on the nature of the work. As well as the town department, uh, that it is applicable to. So we have a wide variety of needs within the town. Ranging from bylaw enforcement to employment law to specialized MGA, uh, MGA legislation requirements. And so we believe that to better align with these diverse requirements, we recommend moving away from the single provider model. Instead, legal work will be distributed among different firms based on departmental needs and on the specific expertise required. And we believe that this approach will expand the town's interactions and experiences with multiple firms. To provide a broader base for evaluating long-term, uh, service options. Will give us flexibility to match departmental needs with firm expertise. And overall strengthen the town's negotiating position regarding fees and service delivery. Uh, feedback will be collected and reported back to the SLT management team to assess the effectiveness of each firm in providing services to the town. And with that, I would entertain any questions or concerns that council has.
Okay, councillor Adams.
Uh, just kicking off with a question, do you guys have a, uh, process in place for evaluating this year over year? Or would this be something every four years you're reviewing? Not for new RFPs, but just the effectiveness of using multiple users as opposed to a single.
Yeah, we could definitely, um, take our scoring sheets and you know, if we go to a new firm. Um, we can definitely review that and provide that back to the, the SLT team. I think the, the general thing is we're going to try a couple of new firms here that we, we have been interested in before, but now that we have a better basis. And just the, the individual, like, let's say planning the development goes and uses that, they'll bring their thoughts and, and, uh, expertise back to us and say, yeah, this was a good idea to go with them. We're happy with the services they provide. And kind of re-score them on that, on that basis.
Uh, I do like the idea of going to a multiple user to pick that particular expertise to the problem we're having. Cause I know some firms are better at one type of law over others. Uh, I think this is a good move to head down that direction. Uh, and I appreciate the effort that went into this. I know it was a monstrous task to try and get that many people to even commit, never mind evaluate seven. So thanks for the effort.
Thank you.
Councillor Choba, councillor, councillor Choba first. Perfect.
Yeah, similar to councillor Adams, um, thanks for all the work that was put into this. I do like the fact that we're moving from one provider. Um, I also like the fact that you mentioned that, um, you know, it'll give us, it put us at a, at an advantage when we're discussing what the cost and all that would look like. So good job to admin for working on that.
Councillor Hughes. Um, yeah, I just had a question about, um, the executive committee or whatever you want to call it that you guys, um, use to review all of this. Was it mostly like director level? People engaged or could you kind of elaborate on that?
Sure. I mean, for the most part, directors are the ones that are engaged with lawyers. And so, I mean, really the only person I would say that's not a director. Is our project manager who is also heavily engaged in some of the big, big, heavy stuff though, right? So he is very important and.
Right. Okay. And, and of that, um, you know, with moving forward like this and kind of doing a combination, engaging with different firms. Everyone at the table agreed that that would be the best path forward. Everyone seems comfortable with that.
Yep. Yep. No, we definitely, I think going into this, like that's why I think everyone enjoyed this kind of experience or getting all of these submissions, because this is the most detailed information we've got. So it was nice to be able to go through and see exactly what's out there. Um, and I, yeah, it was, the conclusion was, hey, let's, let's try this approach. I think we're all on board and we all, we all kind of liked that because there's, uh, having used different legal firms in the past, just because we couldn't use the one because of conflict of interest or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, there was no argument that some people found other firms where they really enjoyed the person they're working with and found that the, the rate that they had to pay versus the surface they got was as good or not better, or if not better than Brownlee.
Okay. Yeah, that's good to know. I just wanted to make sure that the staff that are generally going to be engaging in the process are, are behind it and you know, uh, want to move forward with this kind of new direction. So thank you.
Councillor Granlick.
Um, so I get a couple of questions. The first one would be like with these seven firms. And then till Steve kind of alluded to when this would be reviewed again, but does that stop, uh, administration from using a different firm that they, that wasn't scored if it fits the need for, for.
No, no, just going with this approach. I mean, we got to see the broad, we, we scored everybody. So there's a fair score. We kind of got a good range of exactly who submitted. Um, if there is an additional firm that, uh, we want to engage with, we definitely will kind of reach out or you know, if they want to reach out, we will definitely entertain that idea and, uh, go through there. So yeah, this approach is really not, we don't, we don't want to tie our hands. It's just, these are the submissions that we got and.
And then, uh, so like, uh, what, uh, I really like this approach and this idea, because there's, you could grab from all different baskets. What, why, why did we stay with one for so long? Just continuity and they're on retainer and they were our guy? Cause this is a great idea to go with this approach.
Well, as, as you can see on here, like the scoring sheet here, still at the end of the day, um, the firm Brownlee that we have did score the highest. I mean, they're a great firm. And we've never really ran into many issues in the past. So I think the approach has always been, you know, if it's not broken, don't fix it. Um, this approach here is, I think there's just a little bit of an opportunity, uh, to kind of go and see what was out there. I think having all of these firms provide us with the amount of information they did, there's a little bit more, um, appetite to take on a little bit different risk, uh, to engage in a different firm, just to, uh, to see exactly how, how they're like. I mean, we have engaged with different firms in the past. It's just, uh, Brownlee's been our kind of main staple, but we're, we're open to trying a different approach in the upcoming year.
Perfect. In a perfect world, we won't even need legal, so.
No, I don't know that that exists. Councillor Adams.
Uh, just kind of a sidebar to this. What is the reasoning you feel you got more submissions to the RFP process? Was it something you did in the RFP itself, or was this just fluke?
I really wish I knew, I want to say, uh, posting it on the, I think it's the purchasing connection website. I believe more, more and more firms and more and more businesses are, are going on these sites and are aware of, uh, RFP submissions. I know that the, uh, the one that we did do to post a lot of these on, it, they've revamped it and it's a lot more user friendly. So I, I would best guess that it's just, there's just more firms that are now kind of searching this and have access to the information. So maybe more people were aware that we had this RFP because they're online looking at this.
Why the detail level increase compared to past submissions?
That I don't.
Crazy how much.
That I don't know. Like I really don't know. I don't know why we've only ever gotten two or three before and why we had such good interest this time.
And I think you're referring to that the level of detail of the submission is because the RFP was requested more information. Is that right then?
Well, maybe I know we, you know, it was a good RFP, but we kind of just, I wouldn't say we didn't reuse what we had before. We, we use what we had before and beefed it up some.
So it's just more competitive, likely people fighting for the same on work.
Well, I was just going to comment that perhaps following an election cycle, typically new councils will hire one main provider. And so the fact that we're sort of looking into this maybe a little bit before means there's more that are readily available or something like that. That was my, my first thought, but it's great.
Councillor Adams.
Like to make motion that council accept the legal services request for proposal, report as information. And endorse administration's approach of engaging multiple legal service providers to best meet the diverse needs of the town.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Call the question those in favor and that is carried. And continue with the tax recovery public auction report.
So the purpose of this report is to provide counsel with the list of properties eligible for the 2025 tax recovery public auction. And to request your approval to proceed with the auction, including the approval of the terms and conditions for sale. Uh, so for the background there, I've just kind of outlayed the MGA requirements of the public auction. Um, under discussion here, so in 2025, uh, we started off with about 10 properties that were additionally initially identified as eligible for the tax recovery process. However, as a result of successful communication, payment and payment arrangements with property owners, we have reduced the amount of people that we've needed to, uh, to go to auction to two. So really good shout out to the finance team for uh, really working with everybody, communicating with everybody and getting, uh, as many people as we can off, off the list as possible, but unfortunately we still ended up with two. Uh, so right now we have, uh, attachment A, uh, which identifies the properties to be offered for sale and the reserve bid for each. Attachment B contains the terms and condition for the public auction. Um, the advertising requirements are being met as follows. So the Alberta Gazette publication, uh, scheduled for September 15th issue satisfies the 40 to 90 day requirement. Uh, the local newspaper advertisement will be scheduled for October, uh, before the, uh, the auction satisfying the 10 to 28 day requirement. Uh, the week of September 22nd notices will be issued to all property owners and interested parties. Including copies of the Alberta Gazette advertisement that, uh, will be posted when that is done. Uh, we will still continue to make every effort to communicate with the property owners and mortgage companies, including phone calls, emails and hand delivered, uh, letters where possible. Uh, to make sure that everybody is informed of exactly what's going on. And our proposed auction date we have is for October 27th, 2025. And with that, I can open the floor to any questions, concerns.
Councillor Adams.
What is the process by which you determine reserve bid?
So reserve bids, uh, we generally use two. So, uh, generally in this one, so I'll use the assessed value. So in the case where, uh, I haven't done an inspection or it's too costly to do so, it's okay to use the assessed value. It's a little bit outdated because it does use uh, a little bit of a historical information there. Or, um, if we do have an interest in there, I'll get an assessment or a Realtor's opinion or a property thing. And in this case, we have one valued at the assessed value and one where I had multiple, uh, Realtors give me their opinion. And kind of a small report on the value there. And that's what we went with the other one.
Okay. Other question. Councillor Adams.
Actually, I got a follow-up one on that. So what? What are, if they owe us 20,000 bucks.
Yep.
And we're putting the, I'm just grabbing an example and we're putting the reserve at 150. Why do we have to put it at 150 and not at 20,000?
Uh, generally on that one, it was just, it's fair market value. We have to sell it at fair market, fair market value, right? So in the opinion.
Wouldn't that be their responsibility to sell it at fair market value and failing to do that? Why isn't it? Uh, debt recovery at that point.
Should they have to sell it at fair market value?
Well, that's their piece. If they want to get fair market value, they should try and sell the property, but if they're not selling the property and they're surrendering it.
We are, we are legally required to sell a property at fair market value. You cannot lowball anything. We have to get as much value as that property is worth. And so in that example, let's say they owe us $20,000 and we sell the property for a hundred thousand dollars. The town does not retain the $80,000. The $80,000 goes back to the owner. So.
It says section 419 of the MGA, the council must establish a reserve selling price that has to be set at a level that is close as reasonably possible to the market value.
So yeah, we're just following the, the letter of the law to be able to do that. So.
Alright, thank you.
Councillor Choba, councillor Hughes, for canvas first.
I was just going to go ahead and make a motion. So I move that council accepts the list of properties for the 2025 tax recovery sale as information.
It's motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called question those in favor and that one is carried. We will continue on with our CAO update.
Oh, I got four.
I am not having a successful. Councillor Hughes, please continue.
I will drag you along.
Thank you.
Uh, I move that council set the reserve bids as shown on the 2025 property sale list and reserve bids listing.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called a question those in favor. I won't make this mistake next time. Councillor Granlick.
That council set the date of tax recovery sale date to October 27th, 2025.
Any further discussion? Called question those in favor and that is carried. Councillor Choba.
I move that council approves the terms and conditions of the 2025 tax recovery sale.
Further discussion, called a question those in favor and that one is carried. And now we can go on to the CAO update. Roland.
Perfect. Okay. We got a lot of information here. I'm just going to go through, uh, some of the things that I thought we should highlight here. Uh, if you have any other questions, please feel free to chime in. Uh, for planning and development, they're working with the new land use bylaw. Uh, advertisements have been issued to inform the public of the newly adopted land use bylaw and the MDP and the CAM, uh, planning fees and bylaw fines bylaw. In addition, the department has launched a campaign specifically addressing short-term rentals. To ensure property owners are aware of the need to submit applications for compliance. Uh, for projects, uh, really the big one to highlight here is 14th Avenue Southeast. So paving on that, uh, was started today. They got the first layer on. Uh, the project is expected to be finished next week. So that'll be nice. Uh, it's coming along great. It looks great. Um, so that'll be all wrapped up by the end of next week. And then the only other one that we, uh, are really pushing forward to get done here this year, we're just running into a little bit of stall with Telus is getting our, uh, fiber line installed at the MRC. So we were hoping to have that already done by now. However, we've had to go back and forth multiple times. Um, Telus was originally going to install the line and then we didn't get a response on exactly how long it was going to take it. So now we're going to dig it. And we're going to pull it through, just like we did at the fire hall and hopefully just coordinate with them so that they can come to the building and tie it in. So we're just in the process of doing that. And depending on exactly how that all works out, the costs here will probably be significantly less than, uh, originally budgeted, but we are pushing as hard as we can, because I would love to get fiber into the MRC before, uh, the snow falls. Uh, fire departments.
Okay, but just keep going.
Okay. Fire department, I don't really have anything to highlight there. A lot of calls, a lot of work. They've been doing a great job, other than the shout out for the, uh, the school week there. A lot of stats there to review. Uh, enforcement services. So the peace officer has been focusing on unsightly properties and residential parking concerns. Uh, we've had multiple complaints around town. Um, a lot of, uh, animal complaints as well. Been very busy with that. For community services, uh, the annual pool shutdown began September 1st, scheduled to run to the 29th. Uh, the fall schedule has been released. Uh, for FCSS programming, the FCSS external grant deadline has been extended to September 19th. Uh, for parks and facilities, uh, the ICE users meeting took place on August 30th and everything went great. Uh, the final master schedule is being finalized. Uh, parks have slowed down now that school's back in, uh, the splash parks will be decommissioned on September 20th. Uh, the flower baskets should be removed by September 7th and the lower pots will be removed not long after that. Uh, for upcoming events, we have a couple here, operative programs would have already taken place. September, uh, 12th, we have two AG LH, uh, junior A games coming up at seven. Uh, September 9th is a fire drill, our last ERP drill for the year. Uh, and then family fun night is resuming in September, which includes fall outdoor play at Hill to Even Park, September 15th at 5:00 PM. And there's also free ice cream from Susan's Ice Cream Truck. Uh, finance department, uh, big one here. So we had our annual insurance review with Alberta municipalities. Um, I have confirmed with them that any rate increases for the 2026 year will be, uh, solely tied to the building valuations that took place, uh, earlier this year. Uh, from the inspections, our overall rate is exactly what we paid last year. However, with the building valuations, we'll be paying a little bit more because I, I anticipate that, uh, there's an increase and not a decrease in, in the building value to replace our assets. Uh, in addition, uh, I've purchased new reporting software for, uh, what we're currently reading here for our agenda packages. I'm extremely excited to, uh, move platforms. Uh, I've been working on this diligently. Actually, I closed this deal at two o'clock in the morning. Uh, the guy was extremely happy to work with us. We've got a great discount to move over platforms. Uh, they're going to be extremely helpful and uh, transitioning all our other stuff. It comes with a lot of things that we're um, excited to try that are new that we haven't before and also fix, uh, some of the ongoing issues that are taking us, uh, a lot of time to prepare these reports. And as we can see, we have big fonts, small fonts. Um, we don't like the look of what we got going on and it's taking directors or report writers, maybe an extra hour or two to do a report that really shouldn't be taking, you know, more than 15 minutes or 20 minutes. So.
What's the new software?
Uh, it's called Escribe.
And that's going to replace the civic web?
That's going to replace iCompass.
iCompass.
Yeah. So it's got a couple of things that will, I think we're excited to use. So the YouTube integration, it actually has timestamping for, uh, council things. So when we have reports and new businesses and all that, they're all time stamped after on the, on the video so that either A us or the public, if they just want to look at a couple of things, you can go on YouTube and you don't have to search, you can just click on the little, little link there. Um, the backend for us is just information, information sharing and, uh, document sharing. A lot of great stuff there that I think that it's going to save administration time.
Um, I was just curious how this may impact council, like at this level? Are we going to need some sort of training or something of that sort to figure out how to use a new system?
I, I think it'll be minor. Um, you'll, you'll be accessing it roughly in the same way. Most of these operate in the same way. I like the backend of this and how uh, how the, uh, how the look and eye access stuff. So, so I thought it was very intuitive. So I don't think there's too much more to it. I mean, the additional thing that they did have on there, I mean, we're not doing it now. It was just an additional thing and we definitely don't have to do it. There was electronic voting capability for council in council meetings. I know, uh, we generally don't do that. That was an additional thing. So there is a little bit more, I think, advanced stuff that we're able to do, should we find the need to do it. But I think overall, uh, future council will probably enjoy it more than what we have right now.
Okay. So this is, is this being rolled out like next week though? Like this is a process.
We've got a lot of stuff on the plate and I really, uh, this was an offer that I didn't really want to let go. So the implementation is going to start in the fall here, probably October, November. With, we're hoping for a rollout either probably early January.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there are lots of time.
While we're talking about systems and support, um, does this tie into the ERP system or are we?
Sorry.
Will it tie into the ERP system that we're, we're.
No, no, this is totally separate.
Totally separate. Continue on.
Uh, human resources. Uh, I think the big one here is just our external AMSA audit is underway and is booked for September 29th to October 30th. So that's when, uh, we'll have people in here auditing our health and safety. And for utilities, um, really the gist of utilities right now is we're flushing hydrants, doing inspections, cleaning gutters, really just getting into that fall maintenance here, making sure everything's good to go, uh, before the snow falls.
Councillor Adams.
Pull you back a ways. To our GIS system, I see that it's going through an update to align with our, our streets and everything better. My question revolves, when are we going to make this publicly accessible, similar to what the MD does?
Uh, let me, I will, uh, bring that back to the team and see exactly what the holdup is or what we have to do to actually, uh, to rule that out. Cause I know for us, uh, we're, you know, we're using ArcGIS, so we're logging in as well. So I don't think it should be too, too complicated, but I'll see if there's a backend issue or something that we need to tie into the website to.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Councillor Hughes.
A motion to accept the CAO update as information.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called a question those in favor and that is carried. Next up is our management task list.
Uh, management tasks, yeah, I don't really have, other than the legal services review is now completed.
And the ministerial approval.
We're waiting to hear back from the family on the meeting committee.
And the letter was signed this afternoon and will be sent tomorrow morning.
Yeah, the last one. And so off-site levy policy is coming back. So now that the land use bylaw and all the other approvals have come, uh, it says due date of September 1st. So for the off-site levy policy, um, you may not have the answer to that because you're a place of Alex this week. Um, but if we can get an update as to when we'll do that, because that was March 12th, 2024. So that's one of the old ones that's kicking around there. Um, and now that all the approvals have gone through with the public hearings, it would be good to see that one, um, be addressed if it hasn't already. Anything further to add on there? Councillor Choba.
Motion to accept the management task list as information.
And further discussion? Called a question those in favor and that is carried. Uh, anything for question period? Councillor Adams. Counselor Adams.
I'd like to bring up, uh, a question that I've been kind of stumbling over for a while, but I'd like administration to bring forward a report or put something together for us. We can better understand annexation or amalgamation or what it is we have to do and how that process looks. I'd like us to be able to go in with our eyes open. I find our town is very confined right now within the limits that we currently have. And we need to push those borders out so we can increase our industrial areas and our residential areas and have control of a more immediate area around us. So we're not adopting problems in the future. I'd like to see a report brought forward that tells the, uh, process timelines, uh, Bennett pros and cons of it and the different options that we have to do this type of thing, not just these things, but if there's other ones out there.
Okay, we can definitely work on that. So I will just do say that this is a, this, this will be a pretty big ask. Um, we definitely have to consult, uh, legal and a lot of that other that and just ballparking an ask like this, I'm going to say this is a couple of thousand dollars to probably bring back this report.
Counselor Adams.
I feel this is something that we need to do, and I think we've been negligent by not doing this in the past. We need to move forward and we need to expand our, our actual town borders. We're, we're too confined where we're at. Uh, we've seen this stagnation within our population and we need to move forward with this. Uh, if we're not getting either partnership with the MD to help this happen, then I say we need to figure out how we make it happen. What do you guys think?
Counselor Hughes in her hand.
Yeah, I would echo that sentiment for sure. Um, I mean, I think during this term, it's become glaringly obvious that we do need land. We are very landlocked right now. And if we want to grow as a community, we're going to have to try to think outside the box. And this seems to be the next step is at least to compile some information. Um, I would say, you know, I don't necessarily think we've been negligent. I think I personally have been hoping we could work with the MD and come up with some other options here, uh, but nothing has panned out thus far. And so I do think that it is time to move forward in some way. Um, and so, you know, I understand this could be a lengthy bit of a process, but I think that it's definitely worth looking into and, and should be pursued and we need the information. So.
Counselor Grandlock.
I agree, and there's not much left to be said except for I had my hands, but I'll point out counsel Hughes missed an excellent opportunity. She had to think outside the box. She could have said, think outside the borders.
Perfect. So now we have a slogan for that. Um, and I will default to.
Oh, it's gonna make a move.
Okay. I'm just gonna, I'll just agree with you on that. Uh, it's going to be a little bit of, uh, repetition here. We are missing more industrial land. Um, and the land that we do have available within town borders, the cost would for taxpayers would be unfeasible as we've seen that report come back and it's in the, you know, 25 million dollar plus, if I recall, um, correctly. And we need more options. We have, um, spurred development with our, with, with Ford new place. Uh, and our town is seeing growth and especially with the, the resource rich area around us. I do think it's important to look at areas around us. So I support all this and just a friendly reminder that if you are making the motion, uh, do we need to set where the budget would come from or can we, is there council legal budget rolling?
Um.
What does that call fall under?
Actually, just for having reviewed that, I'm bringing that budget report next week. Uh, I do believe you guys have, uh, some money in your budget that I should be able to cover with this. So if I do go above and beyond that, we'll bring something back, um, to ask for more. But I think right now we can, I can use council's existing.
Existing budget, which is what I like to hear instead of unrestricted. Counselor Grandlock.
Roland, what do you think a reasonable timeline is? So we have a date like, so we're not just leaving open ended. Do you think like three months or not?
I think three months reasonable. I might like, again, we'll reach out to legal. Um, cause this might be like, I might be able to get you like a package that they have ready made. Right? Hey, this is how, this is how this works, yada, yada, yada. I'm not entirely sure. You know, it is something that happens. Um, I do have other packages surrounding some other stuff that I've, I've gotten before. So I'll reach out and see, we can start there. And then kind of go from there and see exactly how much, uh, time and effort and and how much detail we actually want to dive into.
Sounds good. Just make sure counsel out of, you have a date. So new council and admin, keep it. Yeah. So I was thinking.
So let's go make sure date funds.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, administration put together a report on annexation, amalgamation and other options for the future growth of the town to be presented in a report to council by January, middle of January, January 15th. 2026 and the funds to access would be from existing legal.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Called a question was in favor. That is carried.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Okay. We'll move out of question period into our committee minutes, the tri-council health committee.
All right. Um, so health just met earlier this week. Uh, currently our active postings are two family doctors and one surgical obstetric. Um, right now we are going to be working on filling out a new RPAP grant application right away so that we will hopefully receive some more funds to put on healthcare worker appreciation type of events here in the following, uh, this 2026 year. Um, we could be close to realizing possibly some care chemotherapy treatments here in Slave Lake. Uh, that has still been pursued kind of quietly by a few groups in town. Um, and so some of the hospital staff there will let us know if some of the municipalities in our area or tri-council health, um, need help in any way to continue to advocate for this. Um, but it is still on the radar, which I was very pleased to hear. Um, and just a note for the public in general, if you are calling the clinic and it continues to ring, 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 it is because they actually need a new phone system there. Um, it is an old one and it is a large system that is tied in with the hospital and it is hundreds of thousands of dollars for a new one. So more of a public statement there that that is the current reason why it may continue to ring. And so um, persistence is key if you are having that issue. Um, stats, this was kind of for over the summer holidays as well. So there was only 50% of the usual visits. Um, I had the number 1,809. Um, the time to third next available was 5.8 days maximum for a specific provider. Um, there are still over 2,000 people that are not assigned to a specific family doctor. Um, and at the current moment, there are three physicians still taking on brand new patients and two nurse practitioners also accepting new patients.
Um, can I hop in there for a question?
Yes.
Has there been any update on the, uh, OR reopening obstetrics or minor?
Hmm, not necessarily an update, but I do hear that there are some people coming to town here shortly and that the hospital staff will be discussing that when they are in town. So because of the primary care and all of this kind of crossover that's, that's come up, um, I think it's been challenging for them, but we do continually talk about it. I don't have a necessary update, but they, they say they are continuing to push for the fact that we do need to have our OR open, obviously. Um, the longer it sits, you know, the, the harder it becomes. So I do know it is a priority for them. I don't know if counselor Choba wants to add anything to that comment as part of health or I've covered it.
Um, no, just that, um, I think there was conversations about the minister coming to the area.
Yeah.
And, um, so questions about our OR and our hospital as a whole will be brought up, um, in those conversations just to help give us a better understanding or to help the province understand what we're going through here as a community. Um, and as a service provider for a lot of the, uh, communities around us too. So.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Fantastic. We'll move into tourism.
Okay. Um, so while our board has technically been on a summer break here, the last two months, uh, we have still been extremely active with tourism in our area. Our tourism coordinator has been invited all over the region this past summer. Um, she was meeting with a lot of our regional partners, municipalities and First Nations, as well as was invited to attend events, et cetera. So that's been really great. Um, we are also one of three partners that will be hosting a tourism summit this coming November in Grand Prairie. So this will be a great opportunity for any tourism operators in our region to learn new things and make connections within the industry. Um, I believe indigenous tourism Alberta and travel Alberta will also be a part of this summit as well. So we're extremely excited to be one of the partners in it. Uh, we are also going to continue to work on some plans to hold our own fall operators meeting, um, just to kind of make points of connection for people within our region and start to talk about different, um, ideas like circle tours and how we can continue to grow tourism here. Uh, and we are very excited to hopefully be hosting our newly assigned travel Alberta representative. Um, he should be coming up for this meeting if, if dates align. Um, and we will also be touring him around this fall and very excited to start working with our new rep.
Okay. And library.
A couple of things of note, it's been, uh, a rather quiet summer as usual, but it's on holidays, but a couple of points to bring up, the art wall is up. They're currently displaying women gone wild. It's, uh, inside the library. I encourage people go take a look at that. It is quite interesting. The other things they've brought is the library things has received the second order, uh, of new items. This is an expanded service that the library is offering where you can borrow any number of things being, uh, uh, whippersnapper or, uh, something, uh, my, uh, metal detector, things like that, that you can go in and borrow that, that you only need for a short period of time. Uh, they've also added a borrowing agreement to the, uh, for the website page. Uh, they've placed the policies on the website as well and sent up, uh, updated policies to the PLSB. The live history show that's coming up, uh, I would encourage people to check that out. There is limited seating for that. It is on September 15th. And it looks like a very interesting event. Uh, we've also completed the 2026 insurance questionnaire for Slave Lake as well as, uh, Flatbush and Smith. Uh, this, I anticipate much the same situation as the town. We're going to see a slight increase in our, uh, in our insurance request. We also let it know, let the town of Slave Lake and MD know about upcoming board vacancies and the procedures for the three plus year term. Or sorry, three plus terms, uh, met with expert office solution regarding the printer system as well. Trying to get, uh, more economical option in place and replace an older aging piece of equipment that costs a lot more. Uh, they had a couple or a few incidents in July and August for a total of 13. Uh, one was, uh, required police intervention that had to come. Uh, again, that's down from what we see in the winter. So hopefully that trend downtrend continues. Programming has gone on for July. We held 21, uh, total programs for, uh, uh, total attendance of 236. And then in August, we held, uh, sorry, 13 events with a total of 126, uh, people being, uh, attending. We also have increased our online profiles through Facebook posts, online posts, trying to do three truths, one lie. Would you rather that type of stuff to spur engagement? And also bring a little more awareness to what the library has, hopefully getting some click through. So it's nice to see that part growing as well. Thanks.
Counselor Choba.
Motion to accept the committee minutes as information.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Called a question was in favor. And that is carried. Uh, do we have anything for state of the lake? I'll just make a quick note that this weekend is the fourth annual Arc in the Park. Uh, it is Sunday, 11 to four at Sherder Park, which is the hospital park. It is a free event and family friendly. And I just wanted to bring it up as we pass the motion for the, um, garbage can painting, uh, that will be happening that weekend as well, uh, during that event. So great event. Hopefully the weather is nice for it and hope to see everyone there. And with that, Counselor Hughes.
A motion to adjourn.
Any further discussion? Called a question was in favor.